That would be great. I spent my childhood at Sparrow Point Country Club.
That's wonderful, but folks, it is four o'clock and it is time to start our meeting. So I thank you all for being here and welcome to the June 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford on the chair, and we will now start the meeting with a roll call, accounting for the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Panero. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Perlo. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari. Mr. Fotus.
Aye.
Mr. Ari. Ms. German.
Aye.
Thank you all, and now please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Tracy, is there any changes to the tentative agenda?
Madam Chair, no changes.
Thank you so much. In the May 26th email you received, the draft minutes from the April 21st, 2022 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes? If not, may accept the motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we're having a presentation by the Department of Planning led by Ms. Jennifer Nugent, Division Chief of Development Review. On the 4306 Milford Mill Road, Milford Mill Station Development in the MR Zone. Following Ms. Nugent's presentation, council representing the developer will have an opportunity to speak on the issue. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Nugent to fill us in on the 4308 Milford Mill, Milford Mill Station Development in the MR Zone. Ms. Nugent.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you for the introduction, and we do have a presentation that I think will be coming up momentarily. Or I guess I'm supposed to bring that up. My apologies. One second. Okay, so the intention of my presentation, because I don't want to, following me will be Mr. Katroko on behalf of the applicant for the property. I'm going to give a general overview of the the MR Zone and the role of the Planning Board in this instance. There are several sites that are zoned MR throughout the county. These don't come up very often for proposed development. In fact, the last one that we did was in 2015. It was for a proposed AAA storefront on York Road in the Lutherville, well, Cockeysville, Timonium area, just across from the fairgrounds. The site that we are looking at today is at 4308 Milford Mill Road for development in the MR Zone. The purpose of the MR stands for Manufacturing Restricted, and the purpose is to be able to provide greater flexibility in the selection of these industrially zoned areas so that with Planning Board's involvement, it can ensure effective control over the location, type, and arrangement of these uses, and protect them with uses in neighboring residential zones. They can only be created by petition in accordance with the procedure outlined in the section of the code, which is BCZR Section 240, and shall be construed to have any effect on the zone established as the MR prior to the enactment. The procedure as per 240.3 is that the property owner shall file the proposed development plan, and within 30 days, the receipt of that plan, the Planning Board shall make recommendations in writing to the Administrative Law Judge. Administrative Law Judge will hold a public hearing and will pass an order approving or disapproving a plan following the Planning Board's review recommendation and recommendation to the Administrative Law Judge. There are some middle requirements outlined in Section 240, and they stipulate that the plan shall show existing, excuse me, existing topography and proposed changes in grade, proposed streets, location, size, and general character, including materials, proposed use, locations and sizes of proposed parking areas, loading and unloading areas, and proposed screening and plantings. The uses that are permitted in the MR Zone are any use that are permitted in a commercial zone that adjoins the MR Zone, with the exception of residential uses. And some examples are assembly uses, manufacturing, office, and printing. There are some setback regulations stipulated as well in the MR Zone, which we have listed here. There's a 75-foot front setback requirement, 50-foot side setbacks, and rear setbacks, 125-foot setback to the nearest residential zone line. There is a one-story building limit of 25% coverage, and no parking within 25 feet of a residential zone. This slide here is demonstrating where the site is specifically located on Milford Mill. As you can see here, highlighted in blue, the adjacent, and then the dark blue lines are the zoning lines. So the MR Zone kind of goes down the middle of Milford Mill, and it encompasses this site entirely, and then immediately adjacent is ML zoning. And then the yellow is DR 55 zoning, and then as you can see in the dark brown is DR 16. And this is the right-of-way for the metro. Right here, if you can see my hand, there it is, following along this line here. I did go out in the field and took a couple of pictures to demonstrate the property and how it's situated. This is a view, all this treed area here to the right of Milford Mill Road heading towards the east. I took this view. This is over here, this is an intersection. This is Deerfield Road in the forefront, and then over here to the right is Milford Mill Road, and this is the corner of the property right here with all the treed and the guardrail. These shots were taken along Old Milford Mill Road, which is zoned ML zoning. And as is demonstrated with these existing buildings here, there's a variety of businesses already existing. This yellow on the forefront, Brilliant Beginnings, I think if memory serves me correctly, was a sort of like a childcare preschool, and then the white buildings in the back appear to be a couple of different businesses, printer and things of that nature. And then the arrow I have indicated here is the treed area behind is the site. The proposal for the project is intended to be a self-storage facility, and I will bring up a plan on the next slide, but the gross site area is, for the entire property, is 56,326 square feet. The building is being proposed at 117 square feet, four stories at 19,300 square feet per floor for the self-storage facility. They are proposing a rear setback of 95 feet, which is more than the 50-foot minimum requirement, a side setback of 25 feet, which is less than the minimum requirement, a front setback of 45 feet, which is less than the 75-foot requirement, and they are setback 65 feet, which is also less than the 125-foot setback requirement. And they do exceed the parking setback set at 45 feet when the minimum requirement is 25 feet. So let me see if I can, can everybody see this okay? I'll zoom in a little bit. This is the site plan proposal, excuse me. And so here's Milford Mill and Deerfield. As you can see, it's kind of a unusually shaped piece of land. There are, because of the grading of the road, there are some slopes here. And what they're proposing is this building, which a portion of which will be built into the grade, but I don't want to get into too much detail. I don't want to steal Mr. Katroko's presentation, so I'm sure he'll probably delve into those. Access is off of Deerfield in this vicinity here. Self-storage facilities don't typically generate a lot of parking, so they do show some proposed parking here and a drive aisle down the side of the southern length of the building with a turnaround at the western end of the building. Oops. This is a similar plan. It just shows the grading more in detail. As you can see, here is the entry into the site and parking in the front. This would be the front of the building. And then, as I said previously, the drive aisle down the side and some turnaround area in the back. They did provide some elevations. This view in the top picture would be the elevation that would face directly on the Milford Mill. Deerfield Road is right here. As you can see, a portion of the building is buried into the grade below. The bottom picture shows what the building would look like if you'd entered directly at it coming off of Deerfield Road. So the office for the storage facility would be on the ground level here, and then showing the storage units in the levels above. So we did ask for some preliminary analysis from the other county reviewing agencies and to get some helpful feedback. And so what we're presenting to you all today is that our position is overall, the proposed development seems to be appropriate for the MR Zone. Should the Planning Board consider the development proposal to move forward, we just made the following observations. Some of the information is not fully developed and would need to be. The site plan didn't show the orientation of the building to confirm the zoning relief being requested. We can make assumptions based on the elevations that they did provide. The site plan is also lacking some indication of how the traffic would flow with loading and unloading areas. Zoning did comment that they didn't feel it need, it seemed to be sufficient in parking and locations of public entrances into the building and entrances to access the storage lockers. There is some concern about the entrance location in proximity to the signalized intersection of Deerfield and Milford Mill Road. That is a lighted intersection, and there are some county requirements with turning movements in proximity to intersections. It was identified by both EPS and Development Plans Review that there's a potential floodplain in the southwest corner of the site. Retaining walls are not permitted in the county right-of-way easement area. I think there's a little bit of an encroachment there. Forest conservation requirements will need to be addressed, and stormwater management needs to be addressed. So not that those are issues that are, you know, overly concerning, you know, when a project is presented in this sort of schematic format, those types of issues are always identified and can be worked through at a later date. So that, for the most part, concludes my presentation. If anybody had any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Does any of the board members have questions?
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Mr. Avery?
Yes. My only question is, so the Department of Planning, you are allowing this to move forward provided they meet all these other conditions, right?
Yes, as I, you know, the only thing that they're required to show at this point is just some preliminary requirements that are stipulated in Section 240, but there's obviously a lot of detailed engineering that's still yet to happen, and that could re-trigger some zoning relief. And so we're just pointing these factors out. I'm sure Mr. Katroko may have some answers to how they're planning to proceed to the next level, should you all decide to vote to move the development plans forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, no. Ms. Wolfson. Kathy, unmute, please.
Thanks, everybody. Fifty years ago, Tropical Storm Agnes roared through and greatly affected the Gwens Falls watershed, and I believe flooded this area out. There had been other buildings in this area at the time. And so I would say that serious consideration needs to be given to floodwater control, stormwater management here, especially with its proximity to the Gwens Falls and the rail line that's very close to this location, both the CSX line as well as the Metro line.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. Mr. Heckman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question of staff. How did the staff feel about the fact that there's a big three-story blank wall right across the street from the residential multifamily development?
Well, we didn't have any commentary at this time. I think we would have a chance to get into that level of review when the development plan came through the county review process.
Any other questions?
Those residential units, are those rentals, or are they occupied? Okay, so it's unlikely then that those residents would testify about the view.
Probably unlikely.
Any other questions? Ms. Nugent, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation. Now we'll hear from the council. Please keep your comments limited to 10 minutes. We would now like to welcome Mr. Katroko.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hafford. I don't know, Ms. German, can you share, allow me to share my screen? Were you able to give me that permission?
You mean Ms. Nugent.
Did I, who did I say? I'm sorry, Ms. Nugent.
You said Ms. German, which was my name, but there's also a Ms. German on the planning board, so I don't want to confuse anybody.
We go back a long way, Jen. I still mix you up sometimes. I apologize for that.
That's okay. I think you can go ahead and share. I've stopped sharing.
I'm clicking on my share button. It's not allowing me to do so.
Oh. I think we have your presentation if you'd like me to share it.
I like to scroll on it. If we can't, that's better than me not being able to do it, so I would say yes to that if you're able to pull it up.
Let me, hold on, let me see.
Yeah, I think Marcia should be able to allow him.
Try it now, Tim.
Yes, I can now. Thank you, Crystal.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Go ahead and just pull this up. So thank you all for those questions. We're at the very conceptual stage of this project. You all raised some very good questions, and I'll try to address them. As always, Ms. Nugent and the Planning Office does an excellent job in their presentations. I'll just try to fill in the gap a little bit here on this project. We are very conceptual at this stage, very unusual in a zone, the MR Zone, to have this process and step to go before the Planning Board, but we're happy to be here with you today. The major part of our work, of course, is when we go before the Administrative Law Judge, and thereafter, when we submit construction drawings, but we're early in the conceptual stage. This is a simple self-storage building proposal where a person just drives up in their car, and they go through a front door, and they go up and they visit their belongings in these storage lockers. It's not the kind where you pull right up to a garage-type door, and you roll it open, and you put your bedroom furniture and stuff in. These are smaller-in-nature type of self-storage facilities. You see a bunch of them going up around the area. But let me talk a little bit about our site. Ms. Wolfson and others raised some good points about the apartment complex, the Warren Park Apartment Complex across the street from Milford Mill Road. This property was part of that apartment complex, the history of the property. This property was severed off years ago when Milford Mill Road was created to bring the traffic over top of that Metro Rail line that Ms. Nugent mentioned to you, and leads over to the Metro Rail Station at that location. So this site that you see here was always part of the apartment complex. You see below is the old.
Excuse me, I think someone has their, they're not unmuted. Please mute yourselves and let Mr. Katroko speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hafford. You see the old Milford Mill Road here in the bottom of this this particular photo that I'm showing you. That's the old Milford Mill Road. It was replaced by the new Milford Mill Road that goes over the railroad tracks. Those are both the CSX railroad tracks as well as the Metro Rail Line that runs from Millings Mills to downtown Baltimore. And that's some, about 40 feet or so up in the air over top of those railroad tracks. So what you have here, Ms. Wolfson, to answer your question, the folks that live over here in the apartment complex, the Milford Mill Road rises in grade up to about 40 feet when it goes across those railroad tracks. When it passes our site, it's pretty much about 25 feet or so higher in elevation the roadbed is than our site. We sit down in a hole, and I'll show you some slides of that here shortly, but Ms. German pointed it out. It sits down pretty low in the ground where you won't see much of that facade, that wall that was, Mr. Heckman may have mentioned as well. You're not going to see a lot of that, and I don't know if the people that reside over in these apartments, which we used to own, will be able to even see the building on the other side of Milford Mill Road, because Milford Mill Road does rise up in elevation. Not so much where the intersection is with Deerfield, but as you go up Milford Mill Road, you'll see it's a steady a steady incline as you raise an elevation to get over those railroad tracks. So this property was kind of orphaned off of the apartment complex when Milford Mill Road was installed by Baltimore County to provide access over those railroad tracks. And we had a previous zoning hearing on this site back in 96 or 2013 that got approval from the zoning commissioner at that time, the Administrative Law Judge at that time, that the site was buildable and developable, and then we proceeded with what we have today with the mini-storage. But we're sandwiched between the height of Milford Mill Road that you see on the one side of this and the businesses that Ms. German identified. It's an early learning center there, a Guardian Basement Waterproofing Business, Pikesville Lumber Company. We're in the rear of those industrial uses in the back between Milford Mill Road and those businesses. So just to give you a little bit more idea, I'm going to make that a little bit smaller. I've given you the same slide that Ms. German kind of did. I colored in our site in green that you see the MR. You see our close proximity to the Baltimore City Line here on the one, on the right-hand side of the screen there. And then the Maryland State Police Complex is nearby. The yellow area that you see is the apartment complex, which we were part of at one time until that road came through the middle of it. And then the Metro Center is in blue here off to the side. Another slide, kind of repetitive, shows you the same thing, state police barracks and the Metro Line and the apartment complex. So what we've tried to do is to locate, Mr. Rick Williams, who's on the call with us today, has done the engineering work. We did clarify that there is no floodplain on the property. The corner down in this area where my cursor is does have some wetlands and some area, maybe even a floodplain off-site, but our building is located entirely outside of the floodplain. But if you were to pencil it in like I've done here, you see, this is kind of how the self-storage building would be laid out on the property. It is very unusually shaped, as Ms. German mentioned, but it will and can fit in there in between Milford Mill Road and the rear of these industrial businesses. So a lot of the, that's the same site plan that Ms. German already showed you, so I'll skip through that and just show you some of the photos, a bit repetitive of what Ms. German has, I'm sorry, Ms. Nugent, Ms. Nugent has already showed you. The property sits down in a kind of a crevice or a hole next to Milford Mill Road and Deerfield. This is looking from Deerfield down into the site. It's well-treed and buffered, and you see the hill and the slope that you see on Milford Mill Road. Photos don't really do it justice. They try to give you some idea of how the property sits down lower in topography and elevation from where Milford Mill Road is. So it kind of sits down in a little hole in this area, and that's where we're planning to locate. This is the guardrail along Milford Mill Road looking down into the site and the grades. And I did want to show, it's another site from, taken from Milford Mill Road, again, looking down into the property. That's Deerfield Road in the distance there. And then behind the businesses, you see the tree line. Our building will be on the other side of those trees right there, right along that tree line. These are the businesses that are there. They're industrial-type of businesses with their storage yards in the back. So our neighbors that we have, we have the highway on the one side with the apartments on the other side of Milford Mill Road, the highway, and then on this side, the rear of these industrial uses that are back there. And that would pretty much be all that I have by way of a presentation, other than to say, we have a lot of process yet to go through. We have the Administrative Law Judge hearing to go through, and the comments that'll come from the county agencies. We will address all those comments, and we would hope that you would make any approval that you would have today to allow us to go forward, be subject to resolving and complying with those comments from the agencies. We're happy to do that. And then after, if we're able to get through the zoning commissioner's hearing or the Administrative Law Judge hearing, then we'll have to start submitting development plans into the county for review. So we're very early on in this stage of this process. I apologize for the conceptual nature of this, but it's still an ongoing process that we have a lot of work to do yet. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. If I've missed anything or left you with a question, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Katroko. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions at this time? No questions?
Well, I have a process question.
Okay, go ahead.
Why is it coming to us at this stage? I mean, what's the, I didn't think we normally got these kind of issues this early in the process.
Excellent question. I'll be happy to try to answer that, because I've been involved in the county zoning business for over 30 years, and I was unaware that in the MR Zone that this is even a step in the process, Mr. Halepka, so it's a great question that you have. And to be honest with you, I didn't know about it till People's Council, Pete Zimmerman, called me on the phone one day and said, "Tim, don't don't forget that you've got to take this to the Planning Board." And I said, "Pete, what are you talking about?" And he said, "Yeah, take a look at that one provision in there. It says you're supposed to go to the Planning Board." I said, "Wow, thank you for telling me that. I didn't even know it was a requirement, Mr. Halepka." So you're right, it is very unusual. I think the MR Zone is the only one that requires this, and even when I had conversations with the Planning Office and Mr. Lafferty, the director, we were all kind of scratching our heads because this doesn't come up all that often. And I think And, and I think Ms. Nugent will tell you that, that we were all caught a little bit off-guard by this in the process. So it's a very unusual. We're happy to be here and we're happy to answer any questions you have. But it is a bit conceptual and premature. We still have a lot of work to do on this. So, but, but it is a requirement and we're here. We're hoping we'll be allowed to move along and we'll have to make sure we comply with the administrative law judge hearing and, and submitting plans thereafter. So that, that's kind of where we are and it's a great procedural questions and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Avery?
So just that I understand. So are you seeking first step approval from us and you will be back later on for final approval?
I don't, I don't think we have to come back, Mr. Ari. I think that this is a precondition to us moving forward. So you're the first step in the process, which is unusual, as Mr. Halepka said. It's unusual that you guys are going first, but you are, as per the code. The MR zoning requires us to stop here with you all first. And then we go to the administrative law judge for a hearing before the ALJ, a public hearing before the ALJ. So this will be our, our first, as I understand it, our first and only opportunity to come before the planning board.
If, if I could just add, that might add maybe a little bit of comfort. You know, we did assess the proposal with this location and because of the use that's being proposed, although visually it is something that we could work with the applicant to get it to look a little bit better from the road right of way. We did think it was an appropriate use to kind of buffer the residential from the manufacturing zone. So, you know, it is our intention to try and work to get a better design. And before they do get a building permit, they will have to work through any of the other agencies' concerns as well with regard to stormwater management, traffic, engineering, parking, and the zoning setbacks.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Any other questions right now?
Real quick, you know, so the side setbacks, whatever they are, will they be leaving? They look like some pretty mature trees on the perimeters. Will they be leaving those trees?
Ms. German has some great photos of some very nice trees along Milford Mill Road. I saw that she, when she took that shot, they, they will remain, that's part of the county's right-of-way. So any trees and vegetation there will remain, Ms. Wolfson, a good observation. I saw it too in her photograph. Those trees are mature, existing trees, and we don't own that land. So that, that will have to remain in the county's right-of-way. Those trees will remain there. But in the bottom, there's a lot of scrub brush and, and, and stuff in the bottom that we will be clearing out, of course. But, but around the perimeter is going to remain, even up at the intersection of Deerfield and Milford. You see this corner up in here, that'll, that'll remain as well. Now, we will submit a landscape plan per the planning office's comments and recommendations. So Mr. Jim Herman from Baltimore County Government will have to review all this and he'll, he'll make sure that we do a proper job of landscaping this property.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katroko. Is there any other questions at this time? If not, if there's no further questions, I'll now entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the 4308 Milford Mill, Milford Mill Station development in MR zone.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing regarding development in an MR zone, Milford Mill Station, 4308 Milford Mill Road for Thursday, June 16th, 2022 at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any opposed? If not, the motion carries. Thank you so much for that presentation. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the report from the May 12th, 2022 meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the May 12th, 2022 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue 10 certificates of appropriateness for the following properties. Valley Brook at 16620 Wesley Chapel Road in Moncton. The Diggs Johnson Museum at 2426 Offutt Road in Randalls Town. The Scott Property at 35, I'm sorry, at 315 Central Avenue in Glendon. Monologue LLC Property at 209 Central Avenue in Glendon. The Center for Social Change Property at 3601 Briar Stone Road in Fieldstone. The Johnson Property at 5173 Viaduct Avenue. The Womack Property at 516 Sudbrook Lane in Sudbrook Park. The Radkowski Property at 903 Adana Road in Sudbrook Park. Little Valley located at 1940 Rushley Road in Parkville. And the Ferguson Property located at 786 Glen Avenue in Ellicott City. Additionally, the LPC voted to issue one notice to proceed for the Monologue LLC Property at 209 Central Avenue in Glendon. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Now, Ms. Tracy will fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting. Ms. Tracy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Recent County Council legislation of interest to the board, Bill 25-22, 2022 Basic Service Maps, for the purpose of repealing the basic service, excuse me, basic services sewage map, the basic services water supply map and the basic services transportation map from 2021 and adopting a new basic services sewage map, a basic services water supply map and a new basic services transportation map. Resolution 15-22, rank five rural legacy area plan applications. For the purpose of approving and ranking five rural legacy area plan applications, submit it to the Rural Department of Natural Resources for consideration and approval by the Maryland Rural Legacy Board for funding in fiscal year 2023, which include Piney Run Rural Legacy Area, Manor Royal Legacy Area, Long Green Valley Rural Legacy Area, Coastal Rural Legacy and Gunpowder Valley Rural Legacy Area. That concludes the report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tracy. This is the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. The June 16th meeting is scheduled to be an in-person meeting at this time, but we will keep you posted if circumstances change as closest to the date. That is the conclusion of our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Nancy, can I ask one question before we adjourn?
Absolutely.
At the last meeting, we had asked staff to present on the, I don't want to use the word viability, but the total usable space for development left in the county, the 11,000 houses. Did we ever see a report on that? 11,000 units? I think Scott had asked for it.
Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Warren. No, I, I neglected actually to ask Ms. Meacham to pull those numbers and we'll do that. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty.
Sure that it, and so thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All right. Have a great evening, folks. Thank you all for being here. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, Nancy.